All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order February twenty-six, seven P M. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we also have scheduled a public hearing this evening for a food truck application renewal. That is for Herbert W. Meyer. This is strictly a public hearing. I don't know if anybody here is bringing comments or concerns forward for that, but if there is, now would be the time to speak. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And approval of the agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion, remove the recognition from the fire service right on up to right after committee and board reports.
Please, yes. A motion by Dan, second by Velma. All those in favor? Anything else for the agenda? Any committee and board reports tonight? No? R S U Finance, okay? All right, public forum. This is the part of the meeting where non-agenda items can be discussed, so anything that's not slated on the agenda? Anybody has anything they want to bring forward? Yeah, please, come into the microphone, make sure it's on. Just state your name.
There we go. Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen to Jen and I. My name is Adam Burgess. You may have already heard, we have an application going through staff review for a food court in the former board yard of Allen Burgess's. We've been eight months in the process and working diligently with Lee J. It's been good. He's been professional and helpful. Unfortunately, it wasn't until a few days ago that it was brought to his attention, there's a second ordinance that we are to adhere to for our vendors. It's been pretty hard because I had brought a flow chart and where they all lead to for the website, and to be honest, there's many ways to get to where you need to be. Starting from the homepage, you can start straight through to the most current ordinances, which is what Lee J. and I use for the most time. Went through it religiously to find out what we needed to do. Worked with engineers, I've worked with the main D O T, I've worked with a wetland delineation soil scientist, and we've been working on step by step on this. And it was pretty disheartening to find out that everything was gonna completely change. There's another way to get to the app, once you get through the ordinances and you follow the, you know, the step by step how to get through the process. There's the application for the mobile food truck, which is also, you can, you know, work through, again, I have a flow chart, I won't bother to waste time showing you, but you can get to there, and then within there, there's an excerpt for the requirements, and there's an ordinance. And then after the sign line, there's not one, not two, but now we've got a third version of the ordinances that's different. And then, which, you know, obviously, I'm not sure why, but then you can go back to the site, and then we know that they have to have an application filled out for the vendors for the select board, and there's a route through the website directly to that application, and it doesn't have the ordinances attached, so from what I had seen, there was no other ordinance. What Lee J. had seen, there's no other ordinance, until somebody pointed it out that it's on one of the other many directions to get through the website. I do want to hand out this to show you now the limitations on the property, just to give you, is that okay to hand you?
Yeah, I just want to, point of order, we do have this slated underneath the manager's report for later in the meeting.
Oh, I apologize.
Definitely take your information now, but
Okay.
As a board, we'll get into more detailed discussion underneath that, but
Okay.
But I appreciate the information.
Adam was in today, and I told him that he should come up at this particular point to talk about that, because what I was gonna focus on was just the differences in the land use ordinance and the standalone application process for food trucks that you have. And Adam is, I think, outlining very nicely to you the differences in the concerns that it may bring to his project, so that was the only reason I had him come up earlier.
So the orange is the new limitation location. I'll take a seat.
Okay, great, thanks. Anything else from the public, non-agenda items? Anybody on the board?
I know, it's getting old. Diane Robbins, Mocus, Arundel, Maine. I had a few questions, since it's public forum. Has there been any response from Casella in regards to the questions on the dump cards?
I've seen, no, not yet.
Clock is ticking. Is, and this is for the selectmen. And there's a reason I'm asking this, I'm not trying to be flippant. Is there a policy where the selectmen do not allow discussion on issues that are on the agenda?
Repeat that, discussion for what?
Is there a policy that says that if there's an issue on the agenda that the public is not allowed to ask questions or speak?
Not that I'm aware of.
Reason I say that is if you go look at the planning board meeting from last week, they indicated that that was the case. Is there a policy where the planning board does not allow discussion on agenda items?
Again, not that I'm aware of.
Well, depends on the application.
Well, it depends, I mean, if it's a public hearing process, obviously, they gotta let.
Nope, these are agenda items.
Right.
Yeah, but it depends if it's a preliminary review, or it depends on where in the process.
These were land use regulations, so let me clarify, these were land use regulations that they were having additional discussion on, as a matter of fact, the first one, they were making changes. And I wanted to ask a question. And I was told that I would not be allowed to ask any questions, because they were gonna go to public hearing. I've lived here a long time, and I have not heard. So I checked Robert's rules. I couldn't find anything in Robert's rules that said that you didn't have any discussion, because they were making, I made it through just the first one, and they were making changes to it. And I wanted to ask a question, and I was told that I had to wait till public hearing. I made a comment, you can see it. This is not Bitterford, this is not Portland. This is Arundel. I'd never run up against this. Now, I've been absent from meetings since before COVID, and because my husband passed away. But I'm gonna go to more meetings, but I don't want to go to a meeting and be told that I can't ask a single question. Because you might as well not even send out an agenda. You might as well not even have a meeting open to the public, if we can't even ask a question. So if there are Robert's rules that says that if there's a public hearing on land use regulations, and I've been through many of these land use regulations, I've been through a lot of these meetings on them. This is the first time I have ever been told that I could not ask a question. So if there is, I want to see the Robert rule. Otherwise, because this board reports back to you, there needs to be a discussion with the planner, who was the one that brought up the issue and said, nope, she can't ask anything, she has to wait till the public till the public hearing on the land use regulations. And with the chair, who decided not to allow anybody to speak.
Was it the planner or the chair that said that?
The planner started it, and said, oh, no, no, because this is going to a public hearing, she's, you know, shouldn't be allowed to ask any questions. The whole reason for having these discussions before you bring them to public hearing is to try to shake out, I mean, we've been through a lot of these land use regulations, and I've been to a lot of meetings on land use regulations. I sat through a year and a half, almost two years, when we did the seasonal resorts. I spent forever on the Du Bois when they got their permit. I sat on a lot of them, because I sat on the comprehensive planning committee, but I sat on a lot of them as an individual. But we want people to participate in some of these. Probably why people don't go. I had people make comments to me about the fact that the planning board wouldn't let them talk about anything. And I didn't believe them, until I went to the meeting last week, and found out for myself that, no. So if that is not the case, I'm going to expect that something will be said. I know that I've come in front of you about Clearview. I pulled Clearview's consent. I went through it. It's all documented at the registry. Clearview's documented the taking of the land, the signing of the land. What I found was a little strange, was because I spent three hours going through the whole files today, was that there appears to be individual documents for each piece that was affected. And it talked about the dimensions and all of that, and it was like a piece, and it stamped, it has a state of Maine stamp on it. Those pieces are not with the part that's at the registry. But I will tell you, the part at the registry is pretty clear, that you put it in force, and that it's signed, and that the land along, I think it's fourteen, thirteen, fourteen. There's a little slice on one other piece, there's another slice on another piece, they're all detailed, they've got maps with the one that's in Augusta. My concern is, is that they're making this group from Clearview have to hire an attorney about a right of way. That's not on Clearview's maps. The only sixty-foot right of way is the one for the road. And then the gentleman who is trying to do this process doesn't own the piece in the circle, because that was taken over by the town, as well as the rest of the road, because it was turned over to the town when we accepted it as a town road. So I'm asking that somebody other than me, because I could be wrong, but I spent three hours with those documents, and that's not including the hours that I spent looking at the documents at the registry. But I could not, and I said this to the planning board, there's no road. There's, I couldn't find any easement through this guy's property, or between he and the next lot. So this is town resources being expended on property that belongs to the town, with comments being made about changing it to a hammerhead, or doing this, or doing that, when you can't have those comments, because the road belongs to the town. So I'm asking that you take a look at, if you want more details, let me know, because I did take pictures of the pages that I found, but they're very clear. Each one had the Du Bois, and the one where he paid one of the owners for the little strip that was affected. Then it goes into the lot, I believe it's thirteen and fourteen that are in the circle. And then there's another strip. The rest of the easements appear to be noted on the plans. So there's easements for the waterways, there's easements for a couple of other reasons. But there does not appear to be any easement going between thirteen, fourteen, or fourteen and fifteen that would allow him to put a road through there to develop the back property. So I know that they said that this was an issue between Clearview Estates and him, but I don't see it as that. I don't think it's just between Clearview and this person who wants to build this development. The road belongs to the town. So the citizens of this town need to have, ensure that what we've been paying taxes to plow and take care of remains with the town and doesn't get adjusted, taken apart, hammerhead, or anything else, because it belongs to the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Anything else, public forum related? Seeing none, let's approve the minutes of February twelfth.
I make a motion, we approve as submitted?
Motion by Dan, second by Tom. Any discussion on these? No? Alls in favor? We have no committee and board reports, am I correct in that?
No.
Andy, the floor is yours.
There's no opportunity to recognize great work by Goodwins Mills Fire Department, Bitterford Regional Communications, and the Arundel Fire Rescue Department. So on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, at approximately six-thirty hours, Arundel Fire Rescue and Goodwins Mills Fire Rescue responded to a woman in active labor. During the course of this EMS response, the crew successfully delivered a newborn baby boy, providing continued EMS care, and transported the baby and mother to Southern Maine Medical Center Bitterford for further evaluation and treatment. So we'd like to take this time to recognize members that participated in this. Members not present, Jay Byron, Dave Lane, Luke Bibber, Stephen Shawstick, dispatchers, Sam Novak and Jade Saverson. And people on scene was Deputy Chief Reynold Tardif, A.J. Weemus, sorry, and Dan Dearing. So if you three want to come up here, I'll give you certificates from the state of Maine. And then I'd like to recognize the following individuals who were on scene and transported. Mother and baby to Southern Maine Healthcare, Paramedic Adam Mason from Goodwins Mills, E M T Dave Gonther, advance Captain Chris Aberley, and Paramedic Shaheen Griffin.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations, all. Awesome, very good. I hope mother and baby are doing okay. Perfect.
All right. Yeah, yeah, we could take a couple of minutes to just pause here, and if anybody wants to leave now, they can.
We have pretty exciting meetings, so I mean, you can hang around if you want.
That's more like it. That was almost more than a town meeting. All right, Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I had here was to provide to you a copy of the information I received from the planner and the planning board relative to proposed amendment to the the food truck ordinance that appears in the land use ordinance to sort of mirror the the standalone ordinance or application process that the that the Board of Selectmen have in place. As this is unfolding, and I'm sure that Adam will be able to share his ideas on this as well, but as this unfolded, one of the things that is clear here is that both of these ordinances were approved on April first nineteen ninety-six at a meeting twenty nineteen. And they were supposed to mirror each other, and now we have a situation where they don't. And in this particular case, it may impact an applicant as a result of the project that he's proposing to undertake, and he's been working on, so what the planning board is making an alternative to would be to mirror what the application is that the Board of Selectmen have approved. That will then go to a, as I understand it, a public hearing process where not only all of you and people in the room, but other folks from the public will have the opportunity to come and explain their thoughts, and they agree or disagree with the proposed changes that are being made, so my issue tonight was just to provide it to you so you could see what the proposed changes were being made by the planning board, or being proposed by the planning board, excuse me.
And that's in red. What he's proposing is in red.
Right, he's marked out certain aspects and then put in pieces that would would put the performance standards almost similar to, or similar to what's in the standalone application, the ordinance that you have approved, as well as the signage piece on item seven and signage. You weren't allowing any type of sandwich board signage with your application where the planning board piece allowed it. You allowed only signage on the units themselves.
Adam, can you come back up and just, the drawing that you passed out, can you just explain that a little? The shaded orange, I'm assuming, is the
Yeah, I need to speak into my, so the audience can hear you.
So what I'll hand out is a copy of our site plan. And that way you'll see how it's constricted now.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
So as you can see with the site plan, as we were working through it, the setbacks and everything are in the ordinances. The food trucks were gonna be beyond the parking, and then the picnic area would be in the grass area behind. The setback, the hundred feet from the river is, that's a requirement, so we have that section to work with. What happens now, though, from the intersection, the arbitrary two-hundred-foot distance setback for food trucks, from an intersection puts all of that planning off up into, or at least the food trucks up into the orange zone that I have marked, which, as you can imagine, isn't very helpful for a business standpoint.
Can you repeat that again? So the shaded area is where?
So that orange shaded area is where food trucks would be allowed to be located.
Okay.
Under the selectmen's ordinance. There is a two-hundred-foot arbitrary setback, and I guess one of my confusions with that personally, and probably anybody else who runs into the situation, is if you, for instance, to look at ordinances of Kennebunk, Kennebunkport, Bitterfood, Portland, none of them have it, and if they did, none of the food trucks that we know or have enjoyed would exist, because they all fall within two-hundred feet of intersections. So that, from, you know, first off, was a little bit, you know, and I saw that and thought, well, you know, this is, doesn't seem, I was trying to understand, I guess what I was trying to say is, I was trying to find out where that number came from, and I was thinking, well, maybe it was pulled from an ordinance that was talking about a street fair or festival during, you know, and the streets are closed off, and they don't want a truck near two-hundred feet from a turn or an inch, which would make sense, but when it comes to private property, like, for instance, this, ours, and anybody else, again, this is not just about me, the setback also affects partially the one across from Bentley's. I've drawn the two-hundred-foot marks for several D B one and D B two properties along Route one, and it's, there's a lot of them that this affects, and it's all the places that anyone who has food trucks might want to be. But with ours, it's, you know, we've gone through the process of getting an entrance based on safety, visibility, traffic assessment reports, traffic impact reports, all the engineering that's involved, and I just, from there, if it goes, you know, providing we get approved, if there's still this arbitrary number two-hundred, which sort of overrides all of that work, and I think maybe it's something that's supposed to apply to a food truck as an individual, and not food courts, and that's another thing I'm finding a hard time in the ordinances, is that the application process to make a food court appears to be the same as to locate a food truck somewhere, and the application doesn't distinguish between the two. So it's sort of this gray area of, I mean, then, you know, they are two different entities, but they do operate together. It's sort of, the food court is a place to bring food trucks together and be able to have them operate in a, you know, safe and contained place, and this is sort of where we are. I would like to see the ordinances revisited, and I feel like the planning board is trying to bring them up to being them the same, but I don't think that a knee-jerk reaction to bring theirs up to this one is the right path. I think the right path would really bring this to the public and let them revisit what would be a correct set of ordinances. I don't know, you know, what path that is, but that's what I would suggest from my experience. So, I mean, I'm just hoping that bringing this to light will, you know, not just absorb the other ordinances into one. I mean, I've watched the videos and read the minutes from February twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, all the way through the summer of June, and taken notes and time-coded the entire set for the select board and the for the select board and the planning board, and I can tell for the select board and the planning board. And I can tell you that at the time, there was a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of, it was a rushed situation. Like I can, I've got notes, I won't bring it all out, but it was, seemed rushed and one side had to do it and the other side wanted to get it done for them. And it was quick and, you know, I'm not pointing fingers, but it was rushed. And it ended up appearing so. I mean, we've got three sets of one ordinance. And now, you know, there's an applicant stuck in the middle and it's I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I gotta be honest, just speaking personally, I, this board was all intact into 2019. It was the same board. And I don't, I don't recall this at all. I don't I don't remember the discussion on the 200 feet.
Yeah, I don't either. I know.
And so.
But I don't remember it either.
And I've looked for it and I can't find it in any documentation. And again, I can tell you that both the planning board and the select board at the time were were in favor of food trucks into some capacity, you know. There was no animosity towards it. Some of them really liked the concept and I mean, I can only imagine that hopefully that's still there.
So when Stephanie talked about this at the end of last meeting, I thought about this. What does this do to the Bentleys? With the one across from Bentley's? It's the same thing, right? It's three, three food trucks?
I would respectfully disagree with that. The inner, you're talking about.
Because it's not an intersection.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, Adam brought that up and we may respectfully disagree with where the intersection lies there, but
Right.
in terms of, in terms of the food court that's there that was approved after staff review reviewed that. If you recall, they went and got a permit from the state to put their entrance in. Then they came through staff review, they reviewed the location, they gave certain conditions. And then they came to you folks, if you remember, we had a special meeting and they all showed up and we discussed it and we provided through the application process, gave them approval to place their three.
Yeah, it's the intersection piece that.
The intersection, I believe, is, is the campground road intersection.
Yep.
And I think that's well beyond the 200 feet.
Agreed.
From that intersection.
I have, I did actually measure and draw up circles of 200 feet for that area as well. I can pass this along to. It does touch one of the trucks. And again, I'm, it's easily avoided. They could move over a little bit. What I'm saying is it reaches partially into that food court. I just think it's unfortunate. I think it's a number that only, it seems like it just harms business for no apparent gain. As long, you know, as long as we're all getting our main entry, our main dawn entrances with permitting and with site clearances and traffic import, I mean, impact and everything else. Again, I don't see the benefit.
Sure. Adam, this shaded triangle that you have on the sheet that you passed out?
Yeah.
Is it impossible to put three food trucks in that shaded spot? Has that, have you measured that out?
I can get, without bringing, you know, I can get two in there.
Your goal is to have three.
Well, the goal is to have three because that's what the food court allowed.
You get picnic areas, parking, and isn't that?
Well, that could all come forward, right?
But isn't that all part of the?
The parking.
I don't think that meets the, needs to meet the 200.
Correct, correct. The parking ends roughly about where the water pump entrance ends. It goes about five feet beyond the end of that entrance. So that would be the parking on the corner. Entering in off of the Route 1 into the entrance, we have a two-way entrance permit. And then the food trucks would then be in line with about that first shade of a tree or so. What I was aiming to keep is that the people, you know, keep them back into into the more forest or like, you know, more sheltered area than keeping them by the roadside. That was the, the plan on that. So sort of a safety.
I just have a question.
Sure.
I, I believe you did a traffic study.
Oh, yes.
During that traffic study, did, was any part of that traffic study a safety study?
Yeah, well, that's actually in progress at the moment. So my, my traffic study is, is in progress.
And it does include a safety study?
It does. Accidents and, and site distances and in and out entrances of, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the site distance from here is actually better than off Walker's Lane because you're 100 feet more.
Right.
More the other way, so.
Yeah, initially the plan had us coming in there and I was advised by the planning board to have it come out on Walker's Lane. But as far as Walker's Lane's concerned, that wasn't the best flow. So then I had it altered and applied for a double entrance or two-way entrance.
Excuse me. So your entrance would allow for people coming out of there to turn left towards Rundle Market?
I'm sorry.
It would allow for traffic coming out of there to turn left towards Rundle Market?
Correct.
All right. Not just a right-hand turn. They would be able to turn left towards Rundle Market.
I, I know there's an issue with the 200 feet, but why do we even need to have two ordinances? I mean, shouldn't, couldn't the planning board's ordinance point to ours? I mean, that's what happens when we have ordinances spread all over the place, right? It's an opportunity for something to so couldn't their ordinance just say that follow ours instead of regurgitating everything?
Yes.
Operating a permit to operate a business, it's two different things. Like I didn't get a permit to build something on a lot, but if that business isn't allowed because I can't get a license, it's two different processes.
So, so then we shouldn't be putting land use stuff in our, in our permit? Because we have land use language in ours. Okay. So then those so why can't those perform? Instead of regurgitating them in a land use ordinance, why can't the land use ordinance say you need to follow the performance standards that are?
Say that, but you need to be permitted to have a food truck.
I, I get that. Yeah. Yeah, I, I get that. I understand that. And I just, you know, when we get into two different places like this, that causes this problem, right? Something can get missing. That's what happened.
I can't remember what that brought that under.
Yeah.
We had stuff, I think we did.
I, I believe we had some, some other ordinances. I think we were trying to, I think we looked at the Wells, the Wells Food Court is one of them. I'd have to go back and see if I got my notes on that and see where, where the 200 came from.
I, well, I don't understand, to be honest. No. Okay.
Right. This board can, this board can take it out and put it to the voters. Right. We take the 200 feet out and then put that to the voters. That, that's one of the things that this board can do.
Okay.
But until the voters say yea or nay, they're.
And so what, I'm sorry, what would that entail? Was there something I can do on my part that?
Well, right now, it's a planning board's proposal to change.
Right. Okay. Well, because what, I guess the reason I came tonight, sort of in haste was I know that Lee Jay's idea is to put their ordinance is the same as this one. And I felt that if he was going to just propose that, there's no proposal of not taking it out. I mean, there's no proposal of taking out the 200. The proposal is to add it in or not. And if he doesn't add it into the planning, I can still get a food court, but nobody can work out of my food court. Because your standards require a 200-foot setback.
Right.
So it's like a dead end, it's like a dead end business.
You don't get a permit from us.
Yeah, your argument is let's get rid of the 200 feet. That would be your argument, obviously.
Correct.
And that would be something that this board could discuss is, as a proposed amendment to the ordinance moving forward if they so desire.
What's the speed limit right there around that corner?
It's 35.
When do people travel around that corner? Average speed, 45?
I, I don't have that on there.
Yeah.
There are no 35 signs anywhere in here that period. There's no town sign if there are a speed limit.
The, the last speed limit coming from Bitterford is, I believe, just after the Lobster Co. And then if you go down the hill all the way past, we're actually on the corner. We're, we're next to this lot. But if you keep going, it's not marked until, I think, Aroma Joe's.
So
There's no 35.
Is it?
It is 35.
Mark heading 35 heading north on Route 1 towards Rundle?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, once you leave the light at the top of the hill there and head down towards Rundle.
It's 35 all the way through.
Is there, is there a sign right there?
Not until you get, well, there is before, like I said, just by the Lobster Company.
Okay.
And then keep going all the way, you'll get to Aroma Joe's Coffee. I believe it's on the uphill side.
Yeah.
There. And then coming the other way, it's 35 all the way until you get to that said sign up at Lobster Co., but it says 40 heading the other way.
And is there a 35 sign in Kennybunk at any time coming down that road on Route 1?
That's where, that's where the other one, the one up by the on the uphill side. That's Kennybunk. So that would be, yeah. But yeah, I mean, I think it's undersigned.
Okay. That's a state road, so anything within the, the state would place the signs up there. So it wouldn't have anything to do with us placing signs. There's a whole other myriad of regulatory procedures to do in terms of speed reductions or increases, so.
That's, that's all I have and I appreciate your time.
But I, I will make, I mean, I heard somebody say something about public hearing. That's great, but that does nothing for our ordinance. They can get the planning board to say no, but our ordinance is still 200 feet and, and the individual can't get a permit from us because it doesn't meet the 200 feet. So that would have to have.
Unless you modify, put it on the warrant to move forward with a, with an amendment to your ordinance, yes. And that would require a public hearing on your end as part of the, the warrant. Generally, we do it when the annual town meeting warrant has been published and we're having a public hearing on it.
Yeah. But I, I would like to see if you could find the notes on how that was discussed and then we could maybe talk about it again.
Is that why they added the 200 feet to this ordinance in red?
Who, the planning board?
That's the proposal from the planning.
Yeah, the planning board is proposing to mirror the one that we have in place now.
Okay. So in order to change this, we would have to change the other one as well.
The other one hasn't been changed yet. The planning board one has not been changed yet. That's a public hearing on the 12th, I think.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So this one says 200 feet, but you said this was done to mirror
ours.
Yours.
Our permitting process.
They would both have to be changed if you were going to change that setback.
Well, if you want to.
Same problem we are now.
Right. You want to make sure the performance standards on either one or both of them are identical.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That would eliminate the problem. Right now, they're not. And so if, if the board chose to get rid of the 200 feet, then they could do that and, you know, the planning board could follow suit, which they're trying to. Anyway, so.
Planning board simply adopt or make reference to whatever performance standards are contained in our board.
Correct. Which would be easier for them. Which would, right, which would be easier and the planning board could get done their stuff and then we could, we could hash what we want to do and go from there.
Yeah. And then Adam only has to argue with one group and that's you folks about his, his proposed thoughts about changing it.
Are you, are you comfortable with the process now, Adam? Are you? So the public hearing that's slated at the next planning board meeting, are you, do you plan on attending? So if you bring it up to them, request instead of adopting this in writing, say, why don't you make it so that you adopt the select board's performance standards instead of that way, if it goes, I don't know if you were following us, but if it has to go back to town vote, it doesn't have to get changed twice at that point?
But this is like both terms.
Correct. But if the planning board now adopts.
But we could change. We could deliberate changing it.
Right.
Not saying that we're going to do it, but we could deliberate.
Anymore, but I didn't want you to expect something from the planning board and not get it. You know what I mean? It seems like you were scratching your head when you left the table. That's why.
Yeah, I will.
All right. You got an update on IT services?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that Fortress Network Solutions, they're in the transition of our IT services now. We've had a few hiccups, but nothing that I think is insurmountable. And that is a work in progress. It will continue until it's completely converted. And then finally for me, it's just a reminder that you have a budget, budget board and select board meeting to go over operating budgets tomorrow evening, which would be the Public Works Transfer Station and Recreation Department and their capital expenditures. And that'll be tomorrow morning, tomorrow night.
You, you have some news related to real estate value adjustments? That's what you wrote here? Or are you going to save that for tomorrow?
Um, I, I can, I can give it to you now to a certain extent, but I will talk about it again tomorrow evening. We both the tax assessor and myself have reached out, I reached out to MRI, Municipal Resources, and Beth reached out to Vision Appraisal Services. And we talked to them about what would be the best method for us to move forward with a, an update in values. And they both confirmed with us that a statistical update would be the best way to move, which would be a significant reduction in the overall cost. And they, they felt that the reason the statistical update would be more beneficial is because of the volatility in the real estate market right now. And that a lot of our data that's in our database is very accurate. They'll, again, they will go out and do, they will look at two years' worth of, of sales and then visit each property to ensure that what's there is accurate. They'll do that for $25 per parcel at this point is what we've been told. And if it was a full value, a full revalue would be $70 a parcel. So we're looking at somewhere between 65 and $90,000 to complete that, that adjustment in values. So I think that was better news than I had initially hoped for. So it would be my intention when I'll explain it to the budget board tomorrow in the evening, will be to ask for a separate warrant article requesting funding for that project.
And that, that would bump us back up closer to 100% and we should be pretty much all set.
Yeah, I think you're going to be closer to, to 100 at, at that particular point. Again, the volatility of the, of the of the market right now. Hopefully it settles down a little bit and values, I don't know, you know, a lot of you folks that are in the real estate and building trades probably have a lot more gathered on as to what's going to happen here, but it doesn't seem to be coming down extensively at this point. So those adjustments I think are needed and we'll go from there. And that's all I have on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Coming back, this is the food truck application renewal. We had the public hearing on earlier. Herbert W. Meyer. This is in one, I think this is in the one of the trucks in the food court, right, across.
Right. It'd be, it'd be the one that's called something, something fishy.
Something fishy.
Something fishy. Yeah, something's fishy. The only thing that I saw in the. Yeah, something's fishy. Uh, the only thing that I saw in the renewal, uh, application is that. His, uh, insurance policy would expire on June first of two thousand twenty-four. So I will just make a note that, um, that he provide us additional insurance coverage to cover. The summer season. And the only thing we were waiting for and I, they provided it was that the landowner provided a, a letter. Um. Though very sparse, but provided a letter that it was okay for them to be there. Yeah, that's what I thought too.
That, that letter does state the name of something's fishy.
Yes. Well, we don't have those in front of us this evening. Only one application, which would be for some, Mr. Myers. I think that the Bonnetts put all the businesses on one sheet, which. Right, my, my assumption would be when those applications come in, that this letter will be attached to them as well.
Uh, so I'll entertain a motion with the condition of renewing the insurance policy. By Velma. Second by Dan. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor? Motion carries. Now, we're talking about postings already, huh?
Yes.
That's a good sign.
List of the, the roads that. We need to post this year. And again, it's, it's that time of season that everybody hates to see. But, uh, just looking to get the, uh. Select board's permission to be able to post these roads on the twenty-ninth, which would be this coming Thursday.
This is the same, these are the same roads.
Basically, it's the same roads that we do every year. Um. We're posting them all. I mean, some of them may have more frost than the others, but, um. If we post them all, you've always got that option to unpost them early if you wanted to.
Yeah.
So, just looking for permission to post these roads.
Yeah, I made a motion that we. Um, allowed Terry to post the road at his discretion, at the date of his discretion.
Motion by Dan, second by Velma. Any, just more discussion on this? You know, all those in favor?
Post away.
Yeah, the other thing he didn't say is that, uh, we've coordinated it with Bitterford.
Kennybunk, Kennybunk for what?
Goodmood.
Twenty-ninth for everybody?
Yep, yep.
So everybody's gonna get it at the same time.
Yeah.
I know how that feels for you, Phil, right?
And then you'll start getting the phone calls like, oh, my truck, oh, bye, I'm my route. And it's thirty degrees out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
All right, we got an RSU twenty-one warrant and a notice of an election.
Yes, uh, they've provided us the documents for, uh, their, for their June. Eleventh elections. Seems a little early to me, but we do have it. Um, would make a, you know, hopefully, uh. We'll send them on down to you folks and you can, you can sign them on behalf of the town. There's no, there's no value on there, just that they're gonna approve whatever the, um, public hearing process is. Yes.
We just have payables tonight.
I make a motion to approve payables.
Thank you, Dan. Second by Velma. All those in favor? Sign away. Any other business?
I got a couple of small things.
Of course you do. Go ahead, Dan.
Heard back from Consolidated yet?
Only what I sent you via email. Um, uh, that was the last that we heard from them. I know I sent it to Terry as well and we'll just continue to. Oh, I did notice that today on, on Route One that, uh, we're gonna have a, a plethora of. Cut-off poles on Route One now that they're replacing all the, the big poles and CMP is doing, uh. CMP's doing their work now, as I could see. So, and then all those poles have been cut and they're all just standing there with all the other. All wires on it, so, and it's gonna be a big issue.
Okay, and the other thing, um, where, where are we with the, um. Fire department building expansion committee? We making any headway on that or?
Um. No, and, uh, both the, the chief and I have spoken a little bit about this. We, we've had. Out of the advertisement that we've had, we've had two folks that have shown an interest to get involved, uh, at this particular juncture. I'm not sure that our timing is appropriate, so we may wanna, uh, just reevaluate that. Uh, as we move forward to see where that may take us, uh, but. I'd, I, I would prefer to have some more, uh, residents of the community involved in that process. Uh, along with, obviously along with the board, so, um.
The longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna be.
Uh, I don't doubt that, but, but you and, you and I both know that if we do not get a. Um, a positive result from the residents of this community, both involvement as well as our public hearing process. That our efforts would go down to defeat and I would like to avoid that as much as possible.
Well, if we're, if, if we do like we did with this building committee and we make sure that we communicate and get people, you know, people will hopefully come on board, but. I just, I don't want to wait too long to get that going, cause.
Yeah, I think one of the benefits that we had with the, um. With the town hall too, and I think you'll concur with this, would be that. We had over fifty years of use of an existing building that really was in need of repair and change, so. Uh, that necessarily may not, uh, be expressed. With the fire service at, at the fire building right now, but obviously with our. Conversion from a volunteer per diem, um, system to a more full-time. Um, paramedic, uh, twenty-four hour coverage that. Um, we do need those, those living quarters and that space needed.
If you want interest from the citizens, I looked at the list of who you wanted on the committee. And it looked like it was mostly just people that were within the trades or within the fire department. And I don't think that's how it was set up when we did the town hall. I think there were regular citizens, electmen were involved. You may want to not only incorporate fire people from the fire department. Tradesmen, but you may wanna have even a couple of citizens from town. I mean, as long as they have some basic information about, you know, how a house is built or how a fire station is built. They can still help you with the process and making sure that people understand what we're trying to build.
I think that was our intent anyway, it was.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? No, see nothing? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Seven fifty-eight PM, motion made.
Seven fifty-eight, motion by Dan, seconded by. Velma, all those in favor? Have a good night.